Alright, City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting 1435. Today is June 3rd, it's a 7:13. We are going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, in God's name we pray.
Okay, y'all know it. Y'all know it.
Alright, we're going to start with item number one on the agenda, which is the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Holt.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Alright, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Harrison.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Harrison.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any discussion? Alright, hearing none. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Alright, Councilmember Harrison is excused. Moving on to item number two, which is the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any changes or adjustments to be made? Alright, hearing none. We're going to move on to item number three, which is my favorite part. Looks like we have a presentation. And it looks like we have a lot of residents in the House today. A lot of residents. So, I think we're going to have Mr. Jay Dennis explain to us why we have so many wonderful residents in council chambers today and what the significance is.
Absolutely, thank you Mayor Brown. Thank you, councilmen and women. Look at this turnout. Look how supported you guys are. This is amazing. Because we want to welcome to council chambers, the first undefeated team in Forest Park soccer history.
Absolutely. For the first time.
We would want, we want to thank you for your dedication, your hard work, your teamwork, showing others what it takes to be a team. I know you guys have played soccer for quite a few years and you're led by Coach Kerry Runk, and who's also on our park board as well, so volunteering in multiple areas. And I just want to go through a couple of things, just to show how dominating this team was this year. Seven oh and one, two games better than second place. You want to talk about domination? How about a team that scored 29 goals when the competition only scored 14? More than double the opposing teams. Four games, giving up only one goal. Who's our goalie? Four games, only giving up one goal or less. Amazing! Stand up! So unfortunately, in the spring season, they don't do a state tournament. It's only for the fall season. But, on behalf of the City of Forest Park, we did not want this to go unrecognized, so... We have undefeated trophies that you guys will be able to have for the rest of your life. Before we pass those out, I'd like to invite your coach up to say a few words.
Coach Kerry!
Hello, councilmen and women. And team and family. I just wanted to say that...
Mike.
I just wanted to say that this team, I didn't have to do anything. They just worked together. Their parents brought them to practice. It was like, just one big happy family. And I'm very proud of them. And I really appreciate what the parents did because it's been hard to have a team that finally worked, like knows how to work together because they're every practice, every game. And I'm just really proud of them. And I want to thank their parents, too. So, good job, guys. I'm very proud of you.
So we would like, we're going to do pictures, we'll pass these trophies out. But first, I'll pass it back to council if they'd like to say anything.
Alright, would anyone on council like to address these champions sitting before us?
I would, Mayor, if that's okay. First off, I want to address the coach. I see you're wearing a wedding ring. Do you have children?
Yes, my son is Hassan. He's down there.
So not only did you, not only are you a mother and a wife, but you also found time to coach. So with the most sincerest thank you and appreciation, I'd like to give that to you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
That is a lot to do. And I really, really appreciate you finding the time. And I thank your son and your husband for sharing you with the team. Way to go, coach.
Appreciate that, thanks.
Anyone else?
Uh, just quickly, it's so good to see you all up here. It means a lot. And it's hard doing it as a mommy. I coached my son in basketball. Now he's six foot one, but back then, I coached for about six years in basketball. And it was tough. Getting a bunch of kids from different environments and trying to bring them together to merge them as a team. You all have done an outstanding job. And it was a collective unified group effort. And you can see it. You can even see, like, we're all looking at all of you. And everyone is proud. And you can tell everybody's been involved from start to finish. And this is what community looks like. So when somebody tells you, and they say, "Oh, where do you live?" And you say, "Forest Park." And they say, the taxi, "Stop them, stop them." And you say, "We have some, we have some really great things in our community to be proud about. And we come together for these kids like no other." Because this is the fabric. This is what it is. And thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I want to say, I want to say a big congratulations to you all. You did an outstanding job to be number one. So always remember, you're number one in your sport. And keep up the good work. We might see you downtown Cincinnati in the stadium down there. So there you can say, "I learned and I worked when I lived in Forest Park." And thank you very much for taking the time to teach the kids. And you all look like you're really, really good, good kids. Stay that way. Do your studies and stay that way. And I'll look for you downtown Cincinnati. So thank you to you all.
Mayor Brown?
Dr. Moore?
I just want to say congratulations to the coach. Thank you for your service to the City of Forest Park. Players, thank you for putting your time in and practicing and working as a team. And also to the parents. I know it takes a lot of commitment, working, trying to get them to practice, trying to get them to games. So we really appreciate you being part of the Forest Park family. And congratulations. And we hope to see state champions in several years.
Yes.
Alright, congratulations.
Alright. Oh, quite naturally, I just want to acknowledge what Asmin said. You guys have put in some great work as a team. And you've come together as a team. And you've made your success as a team. You know, it's hard to obtain that individual perfection. But when you come together as a team, you can achieve perfection. And based on what we're witnessing this evening, it complements that word of perfection that you have. You've made a winning status to give your name recognition throughout this City of Forest Park and abroad. So you got time to really come together and jail in more ways than this one. So appreciate your team members. Support your team members. Thank your parents for giving you support and your sacrifice of time. You know, it's a different time and age. But when we, when we get the opportunity to witness this, we want to make it be known that you're doing a good thing. And we appreciate it. And you guys, keep up the good work. And as Asmin said, follow your studies just as well as you get out there and move those feet with the ball. And great things will come to you. So congratulations.
Well, I'm going to echo all the sentiments of all the council members up here. So thank you, Coach, for your time and your sacrifice. It actually is a task, and Jay would know, getting people to sign up, to dedicate time after work to coach kids and youth sports. But it's incredibly important because it does create the fabric of what community is really about. So we do thank you for that. And parents, we know it's hot. We know the practices are long. We know that, you know, you've got to drive, you're getting off work, you're tired. They lost their cleats, they lost their shin guards, their socks. But you find them. And you found the time to bring everyone out. So this is also what this city is about. You as residents, taking time to sign your kids up for youth sports that the city offers. But you sign us up, you sign everyone up, and then you win. You win just by showing up. Now, of course, not everybody's always going to have an undefeated season, right? But every effort, every practice, every moment is important. Because they're going to remember all of this. They're going to remember every time that they stepped out on the field, every time that they were sore and they wanted to watch cartoons and didn't want to go to practice. I know I've been there because I was in those same seats. But it's important because those moments and those memories stick with them as they go on for the rest of their life. And then to the champions here, I was actually one of you as well. I played youth soccer. So who plays striker? I got striker. You want to raise your hand? Striker, oh, you're a striker, okay, okay. Who was right wing? Anyone was right wing?
Yeah, I'm thinking you're talking about parts of the team. I didn't even know.
So no one position is more important than another. The main thing that you want to realize when you're playing this game is all about teamwork. And that's going to continue with you for the rest of your life. We are always going to be stronger together when we are united towards a common goal than any individual. So I want everybody to remember that. Now, who was the fastest on the team? See where the hands go up? Oh, okay, okay.
Pretty close between these two.
Okay, okay, both of them? We go outside and race right now, I'd dust you. I'm joking. No, just keep up your studies. That is definitely, that is definitely true. And then parents, I want to congratulate you again for keeping them off the video games and getting them outside and getting them active. Because kids don't get outside like this anymore. Continue to stay outside, play, work hard in school, and really throw yourself into your sports. Other than that, I want to congratulate all of you on a winning season. And I hope to see you again here next year. And with that, if anyone wants to take a picture, you can just approach the dais and then we can get a picture from right up here.
I have one question, Mayor. Who do y'all play for? I can't hear you. Who you play for?
Oh, you guys be louder than that.
Okay, you gotta be louder. Who you play for?
White boy!
I do want to share one real quick anecdote. After Coach Kerry had beaten a team really bad this year, the coach actually emailed me, or the director of the team, and said that the coach said he's never been beaten by a nicer team. So you guys, you're doing it right. You're winning and you're doing it the right way. So we truly appreciate you representing Forest Park the way that you are. Your trophy will say 2024 League Champ, Say Soccer Wings, Undefeated Season. Give it up one more time!
That's Kerry, sir. I like him.
If you want to get a photo, Coach, you want to come up here and stand in the middle and then have the kids line up? And then we'll just stay up on the dais, just to create more space? So all the parents can get pictures.
Congratulations.
Y'all look so good in y'all uniforms. Did you hear me? I said y'all look so good in y'all uniforms. You're welcome.
Undefeated season. Wow.
That's something.
It is. Definitely is. And then Coach. Coach, if you want to come up here as well? Everybody just want to, all the council just want to stand up?
I am standing.
Number one, number one, guys. There we go.
Who y'all play for?
White boy!
Okay, well, we thank you all for coming out today.
Give me, give me something.
Thank you. Alright, keep at it. Funny. Were we ever so little? I don't remember. I don't remember. Alright, thank you. Oh, that's funny. Alright.
You want me to unplug this?
It's okay. They ain't gonna text me. Hopefully. Oh, I got my watch.
Yeah, no, I'm glad that we can't, you know, have a positive.
Nope.
Okay. Alright, that concludes item number three on the agenda, which is presentations. We're going to move on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped, recorded for ease of transcription. And then comments are limited to five minutes. So is there anyone from, is there anyone from the audience that would like to address council? Alright. Yeah, you can come on, yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
You can do it?
And there should be a, yeah. There should be a sign up sheet up there.
Yeah, Jeff Nye, I'm here, 7373 Beachmont Avenue. I'm here to speak in support of ordinance number 19, the text amendment to the SPA 1F. I represent the seller, Kemper Investments. We have a deal in place, ready to sell it to Stigler Supply, who's represented here. Just asking for your support of this amendment to help keep a local business in the community, let them expand and grow. That's all I have to say. Happy to answer any questions you might have, though they may be better positioned to answer them.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I just want to say thank you for attending. A lot of time, we don't, we don't get people's counsel to come and, you know, want to encourage us to do that. So just appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, moving on to item number five, which is reports from council members. We're going to start with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. Hello, council. We will have our beautification committee, we will have our yard judging the week of the 17th. I believe it's the 17th. Please forgive me, I'm not wearing my glasses, so I can't see anything per se. But the week of the 17th, we will do our judging. Also, too, there is some opportunity to do a, to plant a tree for a veteran. And we can provide you with additional information for that. Clerk of Council may have information and/or, if not, I'll make sure she has that. But there's a Veterans Memorial Military Honors Tree application for that. And also, Mayor, actually, there's nothing else that I have. Yeah, there's nothing else. So I'm good. And work session items. Sir, just again, I'd like to conclude, if we can, tie up the conversation regarding really enhancing and complementing the opportunities that we already have in place with the school board. But looking at it with council, I know I did get a chance to talk with Clerk of Council. She gave me some really good news about the possibility of partnership, possibly with our city manager, working with their, one of their board members or whatnot. And I absolutely love that. But want to talk about how do we, like, really starting to feed some of this information or request or partnership ideas to the city manager? And so that we can really move forward in this whole opportunity. So if anybody has any, if anyone on council has any additional thoughts or suggestions on how we can do that, I'd love to be able to just take a few moments at our next work session and just kind of talk about that. I did submit some ideas. And if anyone else has any additional ideas, as I stated, we want this to be a great school year. So let's start talking about how we can partner even better. And I, again, did get a response, did talk to clerk, very happy about the opportunity of the city manager being able to have some of those additional conversations and partnership to what Dr. Moore is already doing. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Councilmember Adams. And then on the yard contest, how do residents get their yard judged?
Yes, sir. So we are going to look at every yard that we can look at. However, this is, however, please, 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 call to have your yard judged. If we drive by and we see it, it's great, we don't want to miss it. We're going to give you a flag if it's amazing. We're not looking at artificial flowers, unfortunately. And there are some things to talk about in that respect. But please call the city. And please get your name, your address listed to be seen, to be reviewed, so that we don't miss you. We're going to look at everybody's yard. But to ensure that we do not miss you, please, 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 call so that we can get your address and we can drive over and hopefully put a flag. And also, if I may, one more thing with the flags. Our high school students did the flags for us. This is the first time we've had that. So our flags are going to be different. We're very excited about that. They did a really good job. So we want to commend them. Maybe we'll get them to come in here as well, and so we can highlight them. But yeah, please call in so you can get one of these beautiful, one of a kind, original flags that were done by our high school students.
Okay, thank you for that, Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, good evening. We have for environmental awareness, we've got several series that, or rather, a series of three lectures that are coming up. The lady that put them on is, or that speaks at them is Carol Monday. She did one a few months back on bird watching. Went over to the senior center to listen. Not that I'm a bird watcher by any means, but it was very, very good. She has written books. She really knows a lot in terms of nature, wildlife. And really, we've got a treasure trove here in this area of very, you know, of birds that people spend a lot of time looking for and will actually travel here to look for. So on June 18th, which is Tuesday at 7:00 PM at the senior center, she's going to be talking about good bugs and not so good bugs. This is going to be helpful for those folks that have their summer gardens. And then, of course, if you're just out in the grass and things like that as well. August 27th, Ohio native plants, medicinally speaking. And so that's going to be a really populated one, as she's going to look at also native plants that offer a number of different medicinal aids for people. And that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, thank you for that. Councilmember Clark, do you have any work session items to add?
I do not.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to Vice Mayor Holt.
I do not have a report, thank you. And I do not have anything to add to the work session.
Alright, thank you for that. Moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to have our residents and council save the date for June 17th. That's our homecoming celebration for Michael Edwards. He's a two-time Super Bowl champion, born and raised in Forest Park, Ohio. And so we just want to thank the school district for their partnership. It's a partnership to honor Mike Edwards for his dedication to the sport of football and representing the City of Forest Park and the Woodenwood School District. And so we want to thank our clerk, Mrs. Bailey, and Drew Jackson, who are, they're working very hard to put together this event. And so please save the date, June 17th. It will be open to the public, just to come out and celebrate our hometown hero. Thank you.
And what time is that, Dr. Moore?
It's in the evening, so we're still in the planning, final stages. But definitely, Kansas City Chiefs and the Tampa Bay. And he currently plays for Buffalo this year.
Okay, okay, good. Well, our school district does breed champions. And we've now moved from Division Two to Division One, correct? I believe the Woodenwood Warriors just moved up to Division One, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, so a lot of champions actually come out of this school district. So I'm very, very excited about the celebration of one of our own.
And he's excited to come back home, so he's excited. So hopefully, the community, please come out and celebrate his hard work in warrior country. That will be sent out and save the date. Yes, yes. But he will, I believe, get the key to the city. And then they're going to retire his jersey.
Well, Dr. Moore, I do have a planning commission discussion for you on the next work session. Would you like to add any other items?
Uh, no, that's it.
Alright, thank you. And then moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I know that we, the city is approaching its summer months and getting ready to have a lot of its various activities. I just want to make a point to the residents, pay attention to our signage of the various events that's going to be coming, and also checking on the website. I'm sure our city manager will speak more on some of the events that's coming up out of this weekend and the coming weeks for the month of June and July, and also in August. But from that perspective, that's all I had from a comment. But I would like to make reference of a line item for our work session. To speak on a communication I received from the African-American Chamber of Commerce, addressed to the council, a subject of area of space for meeting. So just wanted to bring that to the work session, so we can all have input.
Alright, thank you for that, council member. Alright, and I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
What that? I'm sorry.
Just that one, okay, yeah. Alright, got that down for you. Alright, thank you. And that concludes item number five, which is reports from council members. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. I do want to echo the sentiments just brought up a moment ago. We are entering the summer months. And the beginning of our concert series starts on June 11th, I believe. And the city manager will give you more information on that in a moment. But I do want to remind people that once we are in the summer months and we are having our concert series, there will be a lot more people commuting to the Central Park location by foot, crossing the street. And I do want to encourage a lot of our residents to slow down and watch for pedestrians as they are traveling across the street. Because a lot of children, a lot of our elderly residents come out and enjoy the free music and the food and the fun and games. The city also has added a few speed humps on two-way cross. And I would encourage people to slow down and use the speed humps. But consider your neighbors when you are speeding to get to the concerts in the park. In addition to that, though, on another note, I should say, the city actually had a groundbreaking ceremony for one of our housing developments, so pardon our dust, over on, I believe it is Sharon and Waycross, the Morningside Development, which is going to be a 102 housing development. It's going to be a mixture of townhomes and ranch homes. We're going to create another neighborhood. And we want to thank our partners at Cristo for that. But we also want to thank the residents that did come out to that event. It was well attended. And I do want to thank the city manager and for city staff for orchestrating that. But Councilmember Harrison was in attendance as well. And we got to take pictures and we had the golden shovels. So thank all the residents, thank you to all the residents who did come out for that. It was a really good time. So continue to bear with us as we're growing and expanding our city. We're adding new housing product types and we're going to be welcoming new residents. It's just a really exciting time in Forest Park. So thank you to the residents that did come out. And then I want to thank the city for orchestrating that. And with that, that concludes my report for the work session. I have a few items. We will have a discussion on boards and commissions. Council members recall, about a year and a half ago, I did mention that I wanted to improve the process about marketing the boards and commissions, but as well as the recruitment and kind of the application process and the overturning of members falling off of commissions. We are also going to have a conversation about council code of conduct. So that is still moving forward. And very excitingly, I don't want to... Um, and very excitingly, um, I don't want to reveal too much here, um, but we can talk offline. But we are gonna have a presentation from a Forest Park resident, Alandis Powell. She is actually, a lot of you may know her, um, she is actually the founder of Black Art Speaks, and they are the nonprofit organization that was responsible for doing the Black Labs Matter mural, um, in front of Cincinnati City Hall downtown. She actually wants to come and address council about a very exciting opportunity, um, that is coming to the city of Forest Park. It's gonna be a really, really big thing, so please stay tuned. And with that, that concludes my report and all the work session items. And we are gonna close item number seven, I mean, item number six, sorry, um, and move to item number seven, which is the city manager's report, Mr. Don Jones.
Good evening, everyone. I'll keep it short and sweet. We've talked a lot about, uh, what's going on here in our community, but, um, I want to let everyone know we do have a new senior coordinator, part-time, started at the Senior Center, uh, today. We'll be bringing her in and introducing her to, uh, the city council. We also have a new property maintenance inspector be starting, uh, next week as well. As you stated earlier, Mayor, summer's here, kids are gonna be out, they're gonna be in the neighborhoods, they're gonna be riding their bikes. Two parks right here, the school district, even the schools are out, there's lots of things going on in our schools.
Lot of people walking.
So, make sure that, uh, you slow down. Uh, we do have some speed hubs going up in our community, but also I want to, uh, let everyone know that we are, um, our police department is out with, uh, a targeted enforcement for speeding, so, um, watch out, slow down, and, uh, or you might just find yourself with a nice ticket. But, uh, we really don't want the tickets out there, what we'd prefer is just everybody stay safe and slow yourselves down. Most of the speed limits around here are twenty-five miles an hour, and, uh, particularly on Waycross. And, um, so watch out, be careful with the kids. City Cycle's coming up, as you said, Mayor. City Cycle's June seventh, that's this weekend, uh, this Friday, and, uh, six-thirty, begins at six-thirty, there'll be a food truck there. You don't have to have your own bike, you can walk, push a stroller, whatever you want to do. Bring your own bike and ride it, but it's a nice little, uh, short trek here through our neighborhood, and, um, lots of good fun, lots of fun and games for the kids, and it's just a good opportunity to get out and enjoy the weather, meet some new friends. Decorate your bikes, we're gonna light them up like we did last year, it's very popular, and they actually look kind of cool. Uh, all those bikes lit up going down the, uh, going down the street. So, that's this, this Friday, six-thirty. Uh, again, it's, it's free, open to the public, and if you don't have a bike but you want to ride one, there'll be free bikes available there from Red Bike, I believe, that, this year as well, so look forward to everyone showing up on that. We had a great soccer team here, we want to congratulate them earlier, we saw them. I want to remind everybody that, uh, that was, uh, the summer soccer. Fall soccer is now signing up as well, so as soon as you finish one season, you gotta start the next. Don't forget about fall summer, uh, fall soccer signups. Uh, they're ongoing right now, you have to go online, and you could sign up till July fifth. So, don't miss the signup season. Lots of people going on, um, uh, vacations and, you know, might just forget about it. But right now's the time to sign up for, uh, for the next soccer season. And, um, hope everyone noticed our new crosswalks going in out here in front of Woodenwood Kemper. I think they look really nice. There'll be all four corners and, uh...
An beautifully paved street.
Yeah, the pa- the paving, so we had to, uh, we couldn't put everything in and do all the final painting and all the rest of this, uh, until the, uh, we, we sprayed our streets with, uh, that particular street, our new pavement with, uh, a coating that has to cure out. And, uh, so now we're able to, uh, makes it last longer, significantly longer, and, uh, it's a good investment, so we do that when we, uh, we do our new streets. And, uh, so we have to wait for that to cure, but it's cured, it's ready to do it, so I hope everybody likes the, uh, the new sidewalks. And other than that, uh, I hope everyone has a good, uh, good upcoming weekend, so I'm here for anyone that has a question.
I just got one. Are you able to go to an, an update on ED, EDC?
Yes, uh, I can give you a quick update on that. We, um, we have, um, um, rescinded the offer to the, to our original, uh, individual, and, um, we have two other, two other folks that, uh, uh, we're looking at right now. So, uh, we'll have more information, I'll, I'll give you more information at the, um, at the work session.
Okay, thanks. Alright, and that concludes item number seven, which is city manager's report, so thank you for that, Don. Moving on to item number eight, which is the other reports, we're gonna start with our law director, Mr. John Wyckoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, since the last council meeting, I worked with the Police Department to formulate, uh, a mutual aid agreement with Springdale and Fairfield. In addition, uh, I reviewed the, uh, closing documentation with JA Development. I attended the BZA hearing, and you'll be considering Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four, uh, put together by the chairperson, Dr. Moore, as well as Chris Anderson, and I approved the language. I would recommend passage of that resolution. We had an Ohio Civil Rights Commission complaint a couple of months ago. You might remember, the complainant withdrew after I had filed the reply, withdrew the complaint, so that matter's now closed. I worked with the Police Department on the handling of a phone warrant. The witness, uh, was a cell phone company, was trying to charge for documents related to a criminal case, and so we've worked around a plan how to handle those. The company's based in New Jersey, so it's a little tricky there. And then today I received and reviewed the temporary construction and permanent sanitary easement agreement, for the project that's gonna involve going by the school property, uh, the old school property, and approve the language in that. That is the end of my report, unless there'd be any questions.
Alright, thank you for that, John. Anyone have any questions for our law director? Alright, we're gonna move on to our other report from our clerk of council, Mr. Kea Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance numbers eighteen dash twenty-two-four and nineteen dash twenty-two-four, as well as resolution numbers twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four and twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four, has been posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. That concludes item number eight. Moving on to item nine, which is unfinished business, and there is none. So, we're gonna close that and move on to item number ten, which is new business, and I will need a motion to suspend.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules requiring reading in full on two separate days and read for the first time by title only ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two-four and nineteen dash twenty-two-four.
Second?
Been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Only that these ordinance were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Alright, thank you for that, Vice Mayor Holt. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Alright, motion to suspend passes six-zero. Uh, will the clerk please read ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two-four by title only?
Ordinance number eighteen dash twenty-two-four, and ordinance amending chapter one fifty, land usage of the Forest Park codified ordinances as it relates to medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency.
Alright, is there a motion versus Vice Mayor Holt?
I would like to make a motion to table this until after our next, um, work section, session, because more clarification is needed on it.
Second?
Alright, it's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
That this was an order that makes a minor amendment to zoning districts in which medical marijuana dispensaries are a conditional use.
Alright, thank you for that. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to table?
Brown?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Alright, uh, motion to table passes five-one. Uh, moving on to ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two-four, will the clerk please read that by title only?
Ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two-four, and ordinance amending chapter one fifty, land usage, appendix B, as it relates to special planning area number one and declaring an emergency.
Thank you for that. Is there a motion versus Vice Mayor Holt?
I move that we adopt, um, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two-four.
Second?
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
This ordinance adds two business categories to be permitted use in the SPA dash one zoning district, which is, is a Kemper Merrill Business Center, and with that, I, uh, move for adoption of ordinance nineteen dash twenty-two-four.
Alright, thank you for that, First Vice Mayor. Is, if anyone from the audience is in favor of this or, uh, representing, um, point of order, or did, do they, are they permitted to speak in the, this? I, I didn't think so.
According to your rules of council.
Right, I, I didn't think so. So, but everybody, I was making sure you're all good, though, correct? Alright, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Alright, ordinance number nineteen dash twenty-two-four passes six-zero. Alright, and I'm gonna need another motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read the first time by title only, resolution numbers twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four and twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four.
There a second?
Second.
Been moved improperly seconded, any further discussion?
These resolutions were posted six days prior to this meeting.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman Clark.
You're welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Will the clerk please, uh, call the role on the motion?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Alright, motion to suspend passes six-zero. Will the clerk please read Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four by title only?
Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four, a resolution accepting the recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals to reverse the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use for a medical marijuana dispensary.
Alright, thank you for that, Tekeah. Is there a motion, Dr. Moore?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four.
Second?
It's been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, this resolution ratifies and makes official the opinion and recommendation of the Board of Zoning Appeals to reverse the Planning Commission's denial of a conditional use for mar- medical marijuana dispensary at twenty thirty-three Omniplex Drive. It imposes condi- conditions on how the building will look and the type of signage and landscaping it will have.
Alright, thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Will the clerk please re, I mean, call the role on the motion?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
No.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Alright, Resolution number twenty-seven dash twenty-two-four passes five-one. And will the clerk please read Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four by title only?
Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to award a contract to the Cincinnati Custom Sign Corporation for the construction of a new digital gateway sign at City Hall and waive competitive bidding requirements.
Alright, thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four.
Been moved improperly seconded, is there any further discussion?
Uh, yes, at the, uh, center, the city went out to, uh, public bid for the new digital gateway sign at, uh, City Hall. There were two bids, and the city recommends going with, uh, City Custom Signs, the Forest Park business, and, uh, warming on, uh, the new sign will be about three times the size of the existing sign, and it'd be in a prominent display to the main intersection of our city. With that, I motion for Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four.
Alright, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Alright, Resolution number twenty-eight dash twenty-two-four passes six-zero. Alright, and that is the last item, and new business. Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, this council meeting is adjourned.